And Councilmember Rob Donovan is going to pledge of allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Donovan. Welcome, everyone, to the April 27th study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,896 regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, May 11, 2020. We have all members of council with us this evening, and I'd just like to mention, I did not do this, I neglected to do this in the regular meeting at 7:00 PM, that I am in the council chambers on the second floor. All other members of the council are joining us remotely via Zoom. I think we have the clerk in her office, and I believe Paul Bernier is in his office, but we are all following all of the state and county guidelines about social distancing and workplace safety. The only announcements that I have to make are the birthdays that I announced in our regular meeting, but I will just make those again in case anyone's tuning in now. Councilmember Jim Jolly just celebrated his birthday on April 26th. Once again, Jim, happy birthday. Vice President Scott Barr, Council Vice President Scott Barr, will be celebrating his birthday on May 6th, and our Mayor Maureen Miller-Brozen will be celebrating her birthday on May 8th. Does anyone else from the council have any announcements that they would like to make this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
First, I would like to wish my little brother Johnny a happy 12th birthday. For his birthday, I had him hang out with me. We went pick some weed and stuff like that, so he definitely enjoyed himself. And also, I would like to refer an item to the Law Department for report and recommendation. I would like to look into some sort of opt-out system for newspapers. Oftentimes, you'll see different newspaper companies throwing their newspapers at the end of driveways, and I'd like the Law Department to look into that and see what sort of options there are for residents that do not want, do not want those sort of newspapers thrown at the end of their driveways. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Donovan. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. This is an item that has really come up quite a bit over the last four years or so, maybe even before that. We did have the Law Department initially investigate whether or not we could opt out. I believe the opinion of the Law Department was at that time that we could not opt out, but that there had been some changes in the law that now have allowed us to possibly do so, as other cities have as well. I know I talked to Mr. Bernier in regards to this, and he seems to think so. So it would be a welcome change for everybody in Livonia to not have to pick up the pink bags from the apron of their driveways on a daily, well, weekly basis anyways. So I support this going to the Law Department. And is that a motion? Did Mr. Donovan make a motion in regards to that?
I could amend that to a motion. I think I just made a report recommendation, but I'd like to make that.
I think to be an official act of council, we would have to, you'd have to make a motion to put on the agenda for the next council meeting, and then we would vote on it at the regular meeting.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion for the next following meeting.
All right. So we'll put that on the, that will go on the regular agenda, the voting meeting on Monday, May 11.
Madam President.
Yes, President Barr.
Just to clarify, I'm pretty confident I know what Councilman Donovan and Councilman Jolly mean, but I just want to be clear for people watching. We're talking about unsubscribed newspapers being left, right? That's what you're referring to? We're not, we're not saying that subscription newspapers can't be left there, right? We're just saying unsubscribed solicitations.
Yes, forgive me if I wasn't clear enough. Yeah. Oftentimes, residents like myself do not subscribe for certain newspaper distribution. And like myself and other residents, oftentimes we get these weekly basis, and you don't read it, it becomes just a nuisance. So for the residents that don't want it, it'd be nice if there was some sort of opt-out method for those. Thank you, Councilman Barr.
All right. Thank you. And I think that if we, if you, if you describe them as the select sections, that's always what you see, and it's a supplement, I believe, to the Detroit, it's, it has like kind of one article, and then it's a supplement, advertising supplement to the news and the free press is delivered as part of the weekend papers. I think that's, I think of them as the select, the unpaid free select supplements. All right. So we'll.
Madam President. Madam President, just one quick clarification. I do support this, Councilman Donovan. City of Ferndale recently, I think, passed an ordinance. It's basically the distribution of unsolicited materials. And from what I've learned is it's, cities cannot ban it, but we can, I guess, put ordinances in place that makes it certain limitations, whether it's, has to be, you know, on the porch, it can't be left on the road. You know, definitely correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that would be the direction that would probably eliminate a lot of our troubles. So just my two cents.
City Attorney Bernier.
Yeah, I just want to say that I agree with Ms. McCullough that there has been a recent change. I read the case a couple of weeks ago, but in the middle of this pandemic, that seemed to take a backseat to what we were dealing with. Because I know we've been asked several times about this from various council members, from various councils about the issue. Our hands previously was pretty much tied, but there seems to be a case that came out recently that may have untied our hands a little bit. And so we will look into that. And by we, Leo Neville, if you're listening, we will look into it for the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernier. Appreciate that input. Anyone else from council have any announcements that they would like to make? All right. Seeing none. We'll move ahead to the audience communication. And at this time, I would like to let everyone in the audience and any petitioners this evening know that, and I will call on the petitioners, but if anybody at any time would like to participate in audience communication or weigh in on an agenda item you're not recognized, you can use your raise, the raise your hand function on Zoom platform if you're joining us via Zoom. And if you're, if you're just calling in, you don't have Zoom, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. So I hope that's helpful to everyone. All right. With that, we will, we'll move ahead. This evening's meeting is a study meeting, which means there are no votes taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed and placed on, I'm sorry, received and filed for the benefit and the information of city council. Please note that all items on this evening's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, May 11, 2020, where they will officially be voted on. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, we usually say, please approach the podium on either side of the room, but we have no podium since we're doing this virtually. So again, just to reiterate, if you were joining us via Zoom, you can use the, please do use the raise your hand option to be acknowledged. And anyone who's just joining and not on Zoom, if you would simply dial pound nine, and that will give us the opportunity to, to recognize you. Anyway, you will be recognized at the appropriate time, and please understand that we'll be doing our best and we'll be, we'll be sure to recognize everybody. It just works a bit differently than it does when we have the benefit of being together in person. And you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner or the entity or the city will make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience wishing to speak. So just please be prepared to raise your hand via Zoom or dial pound nine when the item that you're interested in and you'd like to speak on comes up. And when you're acknowledged, please state your name and address if you'd like to, for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the meeting minutes, and so that the council and the other people participating in the meeting tonight know who is speaking to them. And with that, we will move on with our agenda, beginning with new business, item number one. This is a request for a new software maintenance agreement with a sole source provider. This comes to us from the Department of Management Information Systems with, and the vendor is ESRI for the city's geographic information system, GIS, for a period of one year from budgeted funds. Director Casey O'Neil from the IT Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This item is annual renewal of our ESRI, our GIS, which is our geographic information system software. This software provides mapping tools that we use for engineering, DPW, planning, assessing, inspection, as well as for the public on our city website. A recent example of this is our GIS administrator, Dan Tidor, recently built the COVID-19 tracking dashboard using these tools, and that allowed us to connect to the Johns Hopkins public data, county data, and our own city COVID data, and put it on one place, in one pane of glass. And this sole source item and the renewal cost is $21,000 even, which is accounted for in budgeted funds.
Madam Chair. Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much. I think this has served us well, and since it is a sole source, move approval on consent.
All right. Thank you. Are there any objections placing on consent? Hearing none, and I'll ask if anyone in the audience has any comment. All right. Seeing none, we'll place that item on the consent agenda for our meeting on May 11. For two, award of bid. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation. This is for the Fox Creek Golf Course Restaurant Drop Ceiling Replacement from Budgeted Funds. And if y'all remember last, sometime late last year, the part of the ceiling, which is now known as Coach's Corner at Fox Creek, fell in, and we're missing part of the drop ceiling. There's, there's still the vaulted ceiling that's there, but the, the regular ceiling, if you will, is no longer there. I'm not sure who's with us from, who's going to address this evening, tonight from Parks and Rec.
Sorry, I'm here. Ted Davis.
Oh, sorry, Ted. Good evening, Mr. Davis, Director of Parks and Recreation.
It's a small little box. I totally understand. So as you can see, as Council President so aptly described it, it is a drop ceiling replacement for the Coach's Corner Restaurant at Fox Creek Golf Course. Bids were, specifications were put out by purchasing facility means of Parks Recreation. We had five bids on the project. We are asking that council award for the low, to the low bidder for the total project to Allied Building Services Detroit in an amount of $45,814. We're also asking that council authorize an additional appropriation from unexpendited fund balance to the Capital Projects Fund 401 for this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry. Was that Councilmember McCullough?
Yes. Mr., this through the chair to Mr. Davis. Everything seemed, you know, allied, I think, was the low bid. I definitely have had bandwidth with them. They're a good firm. There was conflicting schedules in the bid packet based on construction schedule. On one page, it showed that it was going to be eight days, and then there was a, I forget what page it was, but it showed three to four weeks for submittal, two weeks for the grid, two weeks for the lighting, and three days to pad out the ceiling. I just wanted to make sure that we were going probably, I would assume, with the eight day?
Yeah, I did follow up with them on that because their bid was a little confusing. It's going to be a two-week lead time for supplies, and then they are saying they can hold to the eight-day total project length.
Now, is that going to be, you know, obviously with the pandemic going on, is this going to be off hours to allow coaches to operate, or is there a plan to work around them?
I think what they're, the type of work they're doing, when, once you put in a scaffolding, it's going to be pretty much impossible to work around them, really. I mean, maybe the restaurant might still be able to be open, and they might be able to work a carryout somehow out of it, but patrons going in there won't be possible.
Well, like, like I said, the, the three to four weeks just for the submittal, and it seemed like an inflated schedule. I'm glad to hear that it's the lesser of the two. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Was that an approving?
Yeah. You know what? I will offer an approving for consent.
Would anyone from the audience like to comment? Okay, I don't believe we have anyone, so we'll place that on the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Number three is a request to approve a one-year contract extension with HydroCorp Services for the Cross Connection Control Program. This comes to us from the Public Service Division. All work necessary to complete the program requirements in amount not to exceed $63,270 from budgeted funds.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Jacob Rushlow, Superintendent of Public Service. This item on the agenda here is in regard to the water system cross-connection control program that's necessary to reduce the risk of contamination to the public water supply, which would or could occur if there's questionable water that leaves a private facility's plumbing and enters the public water supply through backflow. This item is regarding a one-year extension of a current contract with HydroCorp Services for that work related to the water system cross-connection control program, based on their original contract terms. The program itself applies really to private facilities, including industrial, commercial, processed water pools, for example, irrigation systems. And that really just includes periodic onsite inspections and testing across the city at about 3,300 water accounts. So since 2010, HydroCorp has managed this program for us in the city of Livonia. They have very extensive knowledge of our system, and they have gained a very, very good reputation with these private facilities that require the inspections and testing on a regular basis. So with that, our recommendation from the department is to approve a one-year contract extension with HydroCorp Services through April 30 of 2021, and to authorize an expenditure from budgeted funds in the amount of $63,270. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Just one question, Mr. Rushlow. With the previous contract being for five years, I understand we're getting an extension of the previous rates, but was there any aspiration as to whether we could do this for more than one year?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your entire question.
The previous contract was for five years. We're renewing it for one year. Was there any exploration as to whether we could do it for more than one year at the current rates?
At this point, we did not explore that with the contractor to see if they would be willing to go beyond one year. We felt since it was a five-year package already, that a one-year extension would be most appropriate at this time.
I'll offer approval for consent if there's no objection.
All right. Would anyone from the, anyone from the audience like to comment on this? Seeing none, hearing no objections from the council, we'll place this on the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Rushlow. Item number, I'm sorry, item number four is an award of contract and request to authorize an additional appropriation expenditure. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for Water Main Improvements, which are part of the DWRF, known as the Dwarf Project, number 7452-01. Project areas one and three with $4,136,851.55 to be reimbursed by the proceeds of the drinking water revolving fund revenue bonds. And this is Council Resolutions 389-19 and 364-19. Mr. Zalonsik.
Thank you, Madam President and city council members. As you're aware, the city has done dwarf projects in the past. Previous one was done in 2007, or 2015, in the amount of 7.5 million. And before that was in 2014 for 3.5 million. We were successful in completing those projects. Look forward to your approval on this particular project. Back in 2019, January, with the assistance of OHM, a project plan for the water mash plan was provided to Eagle, and we were fortunate enough to be chosen for the third round of dwarf funding and, which involves basically 14 different locations over a five-year period. So we're getting the first round of funding for 2020, which will carry over in 2021. With that, there was three project areas identified. This particular contract project area one and three was bid out. It was put on Mitten just after, on March 17, and bids were opened on April 14. DND Water and Sewer was the lowest bidder of the, of the four that submitted bids on Mitten. We're asking your approval to assist in project area one, which is at Six Mile Middle Belt, and the other project area three, which is Bonaparte Gardens in section 35, south of Plymouth Road, in the amount of $4 million, $4,136,851.55. Again, there are appropriation expenditures that will be required. Again, this is a low-interest loan through the state of Michigan from Eagle. And we also have Jessica Katers online from OHM, and also Jacob Rushlow is also instrumental in the, getting part of the dwarf funding carries through to past, to engineering for the bidding and then final construction.
Before I move to council, Mr. Zalonsik, can I, can I ask you for some information that, and something you said, and I want to make sure that I understand it. So we were awarded, we are required to participate and make updates by, by the terms of dwarf, right, to our drinking, to our drinking water system? There, there are some things that we're required to do and pay for, correct?
That's correct. We had a master, water master plan, and as part of this project requirement, we had to submit a overall project improvement plan that was submitted in January 2019.
But then you indicated that some of this is going to be paid for by grants.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Not grants, it's a low-interest loan to the state. It's going to be, the overall project was considered 38 million. We're only, for a portion of about just under $10 million for this, for these three projects out of the 14, which will continue on in funding if we're, if we can get funding through the state in the next round.
Okay. And, and getting those low-interest loans is a competitive process, and we had to compete. This is what I was getting at. We had to compete to get those loans. Is that correct?
Correct. We're on high, you know, we got, got the project submitted, and then we were rated higher on the priority list. And again, with the thanks of OHM advisors and Jacob Rushlow, who worked with the Eagle folks to get the project plan in and get approval to get the funding, which, again, which is about $10 million to help us assist us in improving our aged infrastructure for water main. We are grateful.
Thank you. I wanted to call that out because I think it's important for the council and for our residents to understand this, that we are required to make these expenditures for our drinking water system. But because of the excellent work of our engineering department, Todd Zalonsik, his department, Jacob Rushlow in Department of Public Works, and our vendor who, who supports a lot of our infrastructure projects, OHM, and specifically, I would guess it was Ms. Katers who was involved in this, we were able to get very advantageous funding to make this, to do this required work. So thank you, Todd, for clarifying and further explaining that. And with that, I'll go to council for comments, questions, action. Councilmember White.
Just a quick question for Todd. Todd, are you familiar with the company that's actually going to be doing the work on this project? Have we used them before?
Yes, they were instrumental with Murphy Pipelines back in 2008. They did stuff on Terrence between Middle Belt and Inkster. They just finished up Five Mile Road Water Main Project, two phases, 2017, from Inkster to Middle Belt, and then last year from Middle Belt to Merriman. So we're very familiar with them. They worked in various communities, and we're very fortunate to have a good bid to move forward with this project. So we are, again, again, know the contractor, well-known, and can get the job done as you saw on Five Mile Road.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I will offer an approving on consent if there's no objection.
All right. Are there any objections from council? Would anyone from the audience like to speak? Seeing none and hearing no objections from council, we will place this on the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Zalonsik. With that, we move on to item number five. This is award of contract and request to authorize an additional appropriation expenditure. This too comes from the Engineering Division for Water Main Improvements, which are also part of the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, project number 7452-01, project area two, with $3,298,157.70 to be reimbursed by the proceeds of the Drinking Water Revolving Fund bonds. And this is, these are council resolutions 389-19 and 364-19. Mr. Zalonsik.
Yes, this is kind of a shortened version of the last one, but basically, we're in section, or project area two, which is Devonshire Park subdivision, which is in section 35 between Henry Rough and Middle Belt Road north of Joy. Looking to replace those water mains that run north and south along those side streets there between Henry Rough and Middle Belt. The project cost is 3.2 million, as you stated. And again, we had five bids that varied from 3.2 all the way up to 5.4. So again, we was able to get DND Water and Sewer to bid this project. We do both projects. These will be prevailing wages, Davis Bacon wages, following the protocol that's necessary for dwarf funding, and looking to start these projects in June. And appreciate your assistance. Again, overall encompassing about seven to eight miles of new replaced water, or replacing existing water mains. Typically, when our infrastructure was built, a lot of the streets had six, then eight, and six, then eight water mains going down the streets. We'll now be able to replace those eight-inch water mains through pipe bursting method and add additional fire hydrants for water protect, or for fire hydrant protection, and make it a reliable water source that will actually go from the water main, new, new service lead from the water main to the stop box and potentially that to the house if there's a lead service lead.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
Questions for Todd. With the virus going on right now, do you anticipate any sort of projects being postponed, even though they're outdoors and they're essential?
I know. We're looking to start the road program for the asphalt next, next Monday on May 4, as long as they follow the guidelines provided by the governor. But I, I'm not sure what will, what will take place in June. But again, there'll be, I'm sure, following social distancing rules and working through pipe bursting methods on either ends of the potential water main itself. But again, it's to be determined what's going to take place as it's fluid with the COVID virus. But I, I don't see, foresee any delay in this project. It's critical to our infrastructure. Like anything else, we can't put things on hold, but we want to make sure we don't impact the safety of the workers and the, and the residents, obviously.
Thank you. And I'd like to offer an approving on consent with, if there's no objection.
Anyone from council have any objections, or would anyone from the audience like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll place, we'll go ahead and we'll place that on the consent agenda for the May 11 meeting. Thank you, Mr. Zalonsik. Item number six is a request to designate consultant through the qualification-based selection QBS process and to amend the engineering contract with OHM advisors to provide professional engineering services. This two comes from the, this two comes to us from the Engineering Division, also for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, or project number 7452-01. Project areas one, two, and three in an amount not to exceed $594,800. And this too is covered under Council Resolutions 389-19 and 365-16. Mr. Zalonsik.
Madam President, the previous two bids, the contractor provided inspector days for those projects, has now rolled into what you see here before you through OHM advisors. They're going to take on the responsibility of working with the city to do testing, inspection, and final closeout and administration of the project to make sure we're in compliance with the Davis Bacon rules, and also making sure we have certified payrolls. So with their assistance, we'll be able to hold your contract accountable and make sure we meet the, meet the goals and expectations when it comes down to the end, when we're getting audited, and looking forward to their inspection reports, ensure that they follow, contractor follows the standards and specs of the city. They've done a great job in the previous two dwarf projects, and I'm sure had the top-notch inspectors out there for us as always, and look forward to a successful project in 2020 and then carrying over 2021 to hopefully complete this, and then, and look forward to another opportunity to do more dwarf projects in the future.
Mr. Zalonsik, for those of us who are many, many years from our U.S. history and labor law classes, could you just, could you just refresh our memories, maybe on the, refresh of exactly what Davis Bacon requires? I know it goes to prevailing wages, but could you just expand a little bit?
Sure. Just want to make sure that the labor or operator is paid those prevailing wages at their particular duties. You know, some people are non-union, so we want to make sure that whoever's working for the contractor is getting that prevailing wage at that particular job title. So not jumping into an excavator, even though they're laborer. Everyone has a job. Everyone has a job out there. We want to make sure that they're getting paid those prevailing wages and there's a certified payroll at the end. The contractor verifies that those are the people on the job site, those were the, the titles they have, and then it's actually kept in place. So when we come in and have our audits done by Plant Moran, that we are in compliance and making sure that we don't lose future funding. And that's a critical element of this for our contractor.
Thank you. And, and those are required because of the, because of the funding that we're able to attain special loans or other, other funding through government sources, correct?
That is correct. Due to, due to the requirements of the low interest loan, we have to make sure that we make those prevailing wages and they provide that to us. And Jessica, if you're on board, you can feel free to speak a bit more to that if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. And before I go to council, Ms. Katers from OHM is with us this evening. And I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add before I go to council and the audience.
I just wanted to say that Todd did a great job of explaining. And yes, the prevailing wages, there are multiple different requirements that when you're taking federal loan dollars, which the dwarf program is, that need to be met by both the contractor, the suppliers for the materials, and then also for any of the consultants or professional services that you, you enter into contracts on. And those, we will assist the city in making sure all of those are in compliance. And then we will also be inspecting the pipe bursting installation for the new water main and that almost eight miles of water main that's going to be done over these next year and a half.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Katers. I appreciate you joining us tonight via Zoom. Council, questions, direction? I don't know if anyone from the audience has any questions that they would like to have addressed or comments? I don't see anyone from the audience. Council?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman, Councilmember McCullough.
OHM obviously has, they have a great track record. They're one of the better engineering firms out there. I know they've worked with the city a long time. I would be happy to offer an approving resolution for consent if there's no objections.
Right. Any objections? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we'll place that item on the consent agenda for the May 11th meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. McCullough. Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. And again, thank you, Ms. Katers, for joining us this evening. Item number seven is a waiving, a waiver petition. This comes just from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-03-02-02 submitted by Unleashed Pet Care Real Estate LLC to operate a veterinarian clinic on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Joy Road and West Chicago Avenue, 9300 Middle Belt Road in the southwest quarter of Section 36. Mr. Terramina.
Thank you, Madam President. Hopefully everyone can see the graphic that's on the screen. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I was doing it correctly. This is the fun part of the meeting here. So this is a request for waiver use approval. It involves the development of a new veterinary clinic. This is the site of the former Terauski Funeral Home, which is on the east side of Middle Belt, it's about roughly a block south of West Chicago Avenue. This site is roughly three quarters of an acre in size. It has 230 feet of frontage on Middle Belt and about 140 feet of frontage on Hathaway. So the building that is located on the property today, the former funeral home, as you can see, is on the north part of the site. That building is roughly 4,750 square feet in area. You can see that there's parking on the north, the east, and the south sides of the building. And the only appreciable amount of landscaping on the site is the area between the building and Middle Belt Road. So the new veterinary clinic would occupy the entire building. I'll note that this property is in the process of being rezoned. First reading was given by city council on February, on February 12th. The veterinary clinic, as I said, would occupy the, the entire building. A floor plan was submitted with the application. What this floor plan illustrates is what the interior layout of the clinic would look like. You can see from this diagram, it would include several exam rooms, as well as offices, reception area, waiting room, surgery areas, a dog, dog washing area, x-ray receiving storage, as well as other various support rooms. The site plan, as you can see, does a, does several things on the exterior of, of the site. It removes roughly 24 of the existing 54 parking spaces along the north side of the property. This is in order to gain additional green space on the property. There are currently three driveways on the property. The northerly driveway will be removed as part of this. So just the two southerly driveways, those are the two that are on the right-hand side of this drawing would remain. Additional landscaping is also being provided in the southeast corner of the property. New dumpster enclosure is also being installed on the east side of the property against the existing box screen wall. Planning Commission reviewed this.
Mark, you're up. Your screen's not changing. I think you're, on your end, you're changing to the site plans and whatnot, but it's not showing on our screen. Just want to let you know that.
Okay, what graphic are you looking at right now?
Still zoning.
Oh, I don't know why the, why that is. I apologize for that.
Try to stop the share and then jump back in. I think that's how it does it. It won't let you kind of roll. So once you're on your page, you want to start the screen share again.
Let's see if I can get that to work again. I apologize. This should show the floor plan now?
Yeah.
Okay. And unfortunately, the site plan is probably not showing, even though I didn't realize I couldn't scroll back.
It's working for you now.
Oh, it is? Okay, great. So this is the site plan. So if you can see the cursor, this is the outline of the existing building. The parking that exists today was on this north side adjacent Hathaway. All of that parking is being removed, replaced with landscaping. That ties into the existing landscaped area between the building and Middle Belt Road. Here's the new dumpster pad that's being proposed. There's a screen wall that runs along the east side of the property that separates it from the adjacent residential. Additional landscaping provided here in the southeast corner of the property. And then the driveway here at the north end is removed. Planning Commission reviewed this in detail at their meeting on April 14th and was recommending approval. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr.
I just have one question for, through the chair to Mark. I don't have any issues with this. I think this is going to be, even as we talked about at the rezoning, I think this is going to be a really nice involvement for that area. And I appreciate the landscaping plans they have here. I think it'll be really good. I noticed in the planning commission notes, there was a comment about how they had wanted to fence in that grassy area on the north side, but it wasn't approvable. Is that just be, what, what's the reason that's not approvable? Is it just because it fronts a street?
Yeah, so the limitation with respect to fencing is that it could not project any closer to the, the street than the line of the building. So that's something that we notified the petitioner that they would have to seek a variance for any additional fencing that would be installed in this area here. And they opted just to remove that fencing. I believe they feel it's not, not needed. But I, they should, they'll, they'll be able to respond more specifically as to the reason why they removed that fencing.
Madam President?
I don't have a, like I said, I think it's a good development. I, I can understand their need for the fencing, but I also understand our reasons why it's not feasible in that spot. So thanks for answering that.
Enter. Mark, are you able now to unshare your screen? Because I don't think I can see who's... There we go. Thank you. And thank you, Mark. That was helpful. Okay, who was up first? Council, or council member, Toy?
Yeah, Rappel.
Okay, council member Donovan.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. Through the chair, for Mark, looking at some of the conditions, I noticed that it talks about a parking lot shall be repaired, resealed, etc. Does that mean the entire parking lot, or only certain spaces or certain spots, portions of the parking lot?
Well, typically that means the entire parking lot gets, gets resealed and then restriped. That's probably would be typical in this, in this particular project. Since there's going to be so much activity being done on the, on the site, they'll probably have to reseal and restriped the entire lot.
And then are they redoing all of the light fixtures? Because I, I live next to this property, so I'm super excited to see this vacant. It's a beautiful building and to see this building going to a really good use like this. But the lights in the parking lot, those light fixtures are going to be replaced to not affect the residents behind the eastern wall right there, or?
Yeah, I, they probably would not be replaced instead of shielded.
You're going to be shielded?
Yeah, they, and more, hopefully there's language in the approving resolution that requires that those lights be shielded if they're not currently shielded.
And just for the listeners at home, there is not an outdoor portion. Because I, I received a call, someone, a resident was concerned about an outdoor portion to this where dogs would be barking and affecting residences next door. And from looking at the description, there is no outdoor portion of this. Because I know there was some confusion from a resident because that landscaping was being added, and that isn't added for a fenced in area for dogs be outdoors and whatnot, from the way I understood it.
Yeah, so veterinary clinics are prohibited from having any type of dog runs. But there is that grassy area where obviously people could go to, to use prior to bringing or after bringing their pet in for some type of service. So again, I'll let the, the petitioner and the architect describe that in greater detail.
Thank you, Mr. Terramina.
Madam Chair. Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. A few questions have popped up for me, Mark and others. When prior councils have addressed veterinary clinics, there was a concern about them being there for 24 hours, if you recall that, and providing outdoor area care, perhaps after they perform surgeries, et cetera, and the dog is awake, or the cat, or whatever. They can take it for a little walk and get some exercise and obviously do their business. So that green area does provide for that kind of venue, is that correct then, Mark?
That's correct.
Okay. And I, I, unlike Councilman Donovan, have not had any calls from residents, but he brought up an excellent point on, on the lights. And I'm glad to hear there's shields on those lights or very possible shields. That'll be great. And it'll be a great improvement to that building. It is a nice building. Also, the vet that is going to be there, is there experience? What is their background? Do we know? Have they done business in Livonia before? Do they?
Yes. Again, and I'll let, I'll let them speak. They have an existing veterinary clinic in the metropolitan area. They'll be, they'll be either moving that facility into Livonia or expanding it. I'm not sure which.
Awesome. Thank you.
They are experienced veterinarians.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Anyone else? All right, anyone from the audience? I don't see anyone. And I, yeah.
Madam President?
President Barr.
I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent if there's no objection.
All right. I don't hear any objections. I don't see anyone from the audience who wants to comment or object. So we'll go ahead and place that on the, on the agenda for the regular meeting of May 11th. Thank you very much. Item number eight is a vacating petition. This too comes from the Planning Commission. This is regarding petition 2020-02-03-01 submitted by Zaimet Waznik and Associates on behalf of School Craft College to determine whether or not to vacate a section of the existing water main easement within the School Craft College campus located on east side of Hagerty Road between Six Mile and Seven Mile Roads, 18600 Hagerty Road and 17950 College Parkway in the northwest quarter and southwest quarter of Section 14. This was addressed by council resolution 3-19-19. Mr. Terramina.
Very briefly, as everyone knows, the college is in the process of building a sports center on its campus. It's in partnership with St. Joseph Mercy Health System. Construction of that facility required the relocation of an existing water main. That water main public was within an easement. It's customary that those easements get vacated once the, the new water main is installed. Requires a planning commission, a public hearing. Planning Commission reviewed this at their meeting on April 14th and is recommending approval. I note that the, the project engineer is available for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, Councilmember Toy.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's nobody wishing to go against it.
All right, any objections by council? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we will go ahead and place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of May 11th. Number nine is also a vacating, a vacating petition. This also comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-02-03-02 submitted by Woodhaven Retirement Community to determine whether or not to vacate a section of the existing water main easement located on the south side of Wentworth Avenue, west of Middle Belt Road, 29667 Wentworth Avenue, in the southeast quarter of Section 14. This was addressed by council resolution 62-20. Mr. Terramina.
Madam President, very similar to the, the last item, construction at Woodhaven necessitated the relocation of a water main and a fire hydrant. The easement is a, is a short section that needs to be vacated. I see that Randy Gasser is here from Woodhaven to answer any questions that you might have. There are no objections to this petition. Thank you.
All right. Anyone from council?
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr.
I'm sorry, I, I actually have a question for the petitioner when you're ready to go to him.
Yes, and I see that Mr. Gasser has his hand up, so I, I believe he's unmuted. Mr. Gasser?
Good evening. Thank you for, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm getting used to this new format. It is, it does work. Woodhaven is totally in support of what seems to be needed and makes good sense. And we're here to answer any questions if, if there are any neighbors in the audience or anything like that.
All right. Joining us this evening, I believe Vice President Barr has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Gasser, could you give me the exact coordinates of that, those easement, that easement that's being proposed here, please?
Yes, it's 28.46.
I'm totally kidding. I'm totally kidding. Randy's a very dear friend of mine. I had to give him a hard time.
He likes to make.
I'll offer this for consent approving.
All right, are there any?
I should have known he'd take me up on that.
Yeah, clearly he, he came prepared for what I believe, Vice President Barr.
I haven't been sitting here all evening for nothing.
Anyone else have any questions for Gasser, any objections to place this, placing this on consent? I do not see that anyone in the audience has any questions or wishes to object to consent. So we will go ahead and place this on the consent agenda for the May 11th regular meeting. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we'll go on to item number 10. This is a site plan petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-02-08-01 submitted by Ventura and Associates on behalf of Western Wayne Physicians to construct and addition and remodel the front entrance of the existing building located on the east side of Levan Road between Linden Avenue and Five Mile Road, 15160 Levan Road in the northeast quarter of Section 20. Mr. Terramina.
Thank you. This is a site plan petition. It involves an existing medical office building that is on Levan Road. This property, as you can see, is directly across from St. Mary Mercy Hospital. The site itself is roughly four tenths of an acre in size. It's zoned OS office services, as well as a portion being zoned C2 general business. There's an existing building, and hopefully my slides are working. Did that switch to the aerial? Not sure. Well, I'm trying to show the aerial photograph of this. Does everyone see the aerial photograph?
No, I don't.
No.
No, it's not working, and I'm not sure why that is. How about now? We're going to try it one more time.
Time's a charm.
Yeah. How about now? Does that show it?
No, just your background now, your actual PC background. No, just your background now, your actual PC background.
Really?
You did it once, you can do it again, we got faith in you.
I think you're going to tell me when I, when it does show, right? Okay, one last try, otherwise I'm just going to let you use. How about now?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, so this is the aerial photograph and note that this building is kind of L-shaped and the addition is going right here and that'll effectively square off the building. So there's two additions actually, this is the larger of the two, it's about 590 square feet, it would be in the southwest corner of the, of the building. The second addition is located right here, which is where the main entryway is into the building. The purpose of this is to provide an enclosed airlock as well as a vestibule for persons that are entering the facility. So the smaller addition is only 53 square feet. When you add the two together, it's going to bring the total building area up to about 2,866 square feet. So the proposed additions comply with all of the height, area and setback requirements of the OS zoning district. There is additional landscaping that's provided around the foundation of the building as well as the north side of the building. That landscaping, the addition will bring it up to about 20% of the site, so that's more than the 15% that we typically like to see. The required parking for this facility is 21 spaces. The site plan shows 23 available parking spaces. Hopefully this is changing for us. This is what the renting would look like. This is that vestibule area and this gray material here is a simulated stone material that would go on the, the building, you can see the asphalt shingle roof here. This is the existing, this is the existing mansard roof that would be extended all the way out to the edge of the, the new addition. The, the larger the two additions is, consists of very similar material as what's shown on the vestibule. Planning Commission again reviewed this at their meeting a couple of weeks ago and is recommending approval of the plans as submitted, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
To Mr. Tormina, if I may, through, Mr. Tormina, is, is the building adjacent to this to the north, is that Lavon Vet? This is the old Ollie Building?
Yes, I believe that is.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, just wondered, is that the wooded area that we can see in the aerial? I'm supposing those are trees, obviously, I know they're not mountains. Are, are those, is that wetlands in there at all or no?
So yeah, there are some flood plain and there's a creek that runs right through here, this is the same creek that runs behind the gas station.
Behind there, okay.
Reynolds Ravine. There are some wetlands associated with this drainage course, that is correct.
Okay, all righty. And this is going to be used by physicians, I suppose, that patronize or practice out of the St. Mary's Hospital and other places and perhaps, right?
Perhaps, I believe there's some affiliation, but I'll let the petitioner answer that.
Probably not exclusively, okay. Chair, I think it's a vast improvement to that area. The building, you know, needs a little update and they certainly have provided for that in their renderings. I would ask for an approving resolution, if I may. Thank you.
I have a question, I see that the petitioner and I
Oh.
has, has raised his hand and Mark, do you know, is this Mr. Ventura?
I'm, it's Doug Fowzart.
Ah, pardon me?
Doug Fowzart.
Okay, good, good evening. I, I, and I'm happy that, that you've joined us and thank you for participating. Mark, could you go back please to the street view? The current street view if you're able to, I, I don't want to jinx us because we were going through nicely.
When you say the, the street view, this one?
Yeah, so the, the new, the new entryway, which looks great, would, would be on the front of this, but there are no plans to change the, the current mansard roof or the windows or anything else, I, I just want to make sure.
The windows are, the windows on the north wall are new.
Okay, they are, I see that.
Yes, and the, and the shelves on the mansard, the man, we haven't selected them yet.
Okay, but those are shingles.
Yes.
Okay, I, I wasn't, I wasn't clear on that, all right, thank you. Does anyone else from council have any questions for Mr. Tormina or for the petitioner?
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Actually I have a question for Mr. Zelwitzik. Give him a chance to unmute here.
Go ahead.
Todd, I just, I think just as a matter of due diligence, it doesn't appear to be an issue, but I know this is right along the area, Reynolds Ravine there where years ago we had the issue with the erosion. And anytime we have development over in this area, there's concern from those neighbors, I've been contacted by some already as to whether this would have any impact on that. Seeing as it's essentially squaring off the building and not extending the building any further to the south, I don't think that's an issue, but have, can you elaborate on that at all, whether we have anything to be concerned about there?
Sure, since we're within a 500-foot Laker stream, we require sole erosion sanitation control plan from the developer for this, so that'll help protect obviously any erosion into that stream itself, but as you're aware, back probably several years ago, we spent 19,500 of the residents and business owners spent close to $20,000 per lot to address that with a grant that we had. So I obviously want to protect that wetland and Creek, Bell Creek portion there with the sole erosion control plan to have, it'll have a bond based on our parameters itself. But that is a great point, as we want to protect that area under construction.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
Just kind of looking over the facade, this is kind of another approach where we're taking, you know, the building and, and bringing it to 2020. So I just kind of go out there and tell the petitioner, thanks for coming forward with a nice plan. In an existing facility that could definitely use a facelift, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Toy, were you going to?
Well, I offered an approving, but I wondered if that white car comes with it.
Being in your driveway six months after the dump.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a joke.
Adding some levity to the meeting, Madam.
Very good. We have an approving resolution from Councilmember Toy, is that for consent?
Whatever you choose, Madam Chair, I'm at your mercy.
Does, does any of the council members have any objection to placing this on consent? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and place it on consent for the regular meeting of May 11th, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much and thanks for joining us. Item number 11 is also a site plan petition that comes from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-03-08-02 submitted by Lincoln Dental to construct in addition to the existing building located on the north side of Joy Road between Inkster Road and Harrison Avenue, 28,000 and 28,024 Joy Road in the southwest quarter of Section 36. Mr. Tormina.
Mark, you got to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam President. The site that is, the subject of this petition is located on Joy Road, as you indicated, it's between Floral and Dearing Avenues. You may recall this site, at least the address of 28024 Joy Road. This petitioner recently acquired that site from the city. He has his dental practice located on the, the property adjacent to that. The purpose for acquiring that property from the city, I think last year, is to expand his practice. This is the aerial photograph, hopefully you can see showing the, the building as it exists, mostly on the west side.
It's not coming up, I.
Not coming up again and, you know, it says it's paused and.
Just repeat what you've done the last two times, right?
I guess. Does it show in now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not going to fiddle with this other than just pointing to this aerial photograph. So you can see the existing building, this is a site that was acquired from the city a year or so ago by the petitioner with the express intention of constructing in addition to this existing building. This is the, the site plan, what it looks like. This grayish area shows the, the size of the addition, that would be about 1,250 square feet. That would bring the, the overall building area up to 4,700 square feet. You'll notice that there are some residential homes that are located to the north of this property. The existing developed property or the original site does contain a masonry wall that runs to the edge of the property about here. With this addition and the improvements to the site, that masonry wall will be extended all the way to the northwest corner of the expanded site, so it'll provide a full screen adjacent to the residential properties. There's really no changes occurring to any of the parking lot or any of the landscaping. It's just the, the building addition, which is going to match the, the style of the existing structure. It complies in all respects with the setback requirements, both the side, the rear, as well as the, the front. Parking is adequate at 35 spaces and once again, the Planning Commission reviewed this petition in detail on April 14th and was recommending approval, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This question is for Mr. Tormina. In regards to the masonry wall that runs between the residence and the property that we're talking about here, that is going to be similar material to the existing wall, correct?
Yeah, so I believe the approving resolution addresses that. If not, that's something that we could adopt as part of the resolution, that we match it as, as best as possible. I, I don't have a photograph showing what that existing wall looks like, maybe the petitioner or his architect could shed some light on that.
And then my next question is, number nine and number 13, they talk about the walls of the dumpster enclosure. And if you could give me a little information here, when you're talking about a medical building like this, it currently does not have a outdoor trash dumpster, so which means there's no wall out there, enclosure for the dumpsters. And number 13 says if it is determined that an outdoor trash dumpster is needed, then the, the next step will take place there. What are the rules there? How can a medical company not have dumpster enclosure when we're talking about medical waste and whatnot?
Well, many of these facilities have a, a service that comes and, and picks up the trash. Any general office refuse could be placed at the curb as part of their option, but any medical waste obviously is, is handled through the private service. That item was addressed during the Planning Commission review. The petitioner indicated that at the present time, they did not see the need for a dumpster as they don't currently have a dumpster on the site. The Planning Commission felt it was important to address that nonetheless as part of the approving resolution stating that if and when they decide that any type of dumpster is needed on the site, that they work with the planning department on the details of that enclosure, planning and inspection.
Well, I would like to offer an approving resolution on consent, if there's no objection with, with the point that the wall that is in between the residence and this building is of similar material and if there is in the future dumpster enclosure, making sure that that, the material used for the dumpster enclosure is decorative or matches the existing building.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
I thought that Councilman Donovan brought up an interesting point on that dumpster. Tormina, if I may, Madam Chair, for you, Mr. Tormina, how will we know that? You know, if it will need dumpster in the future? I, I just, you know, when people put garbage out by the road and it's, I know there might not be needles or syringes or whatever perhaps in that, but how do we rest assured that, you know, what type of medical kinds of trash is being put out by the road? I don't mean to get overly picky, I just want to safeguard us and, you know, people that live in that area, not that they're going to do anything wrong, but how will we know in the future? Do we inspect that? Do we go in and question them? I mean, you know, what's the procedure there?
You know, I, I, I don't know the full answer to that question. As Toy, I, I would say that if there's any concern expressed by residents or, or the hall or as to safeguards, you know, some unsafe sanitation practices, then clearly the inspection department would respond to that. This has been a, a practice that's been in existence, I'm not aware of there being any problems. Again, the, the resolution attempts to address the need for the dumpster in the future should they choose to install one, but beyond that. I, I don't see the petitioners here, unfortunately, I wish they were, but I don't see them on the list of attendees.
Okay, I was just trying to, you know, take the place there of our good friend Brandon Kritzman, Councilman Kritzman, who always insisted on his little dumpster stuff, so great question and I think we need to pay attention to that, I just didn't want to give us any extra kind of work, you know, but thank you very much for that explanation, Mark.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
Through the chair to Mr. Tormina, just a quick general question in terms to more, you know, our agenda. On projects like these site plan approvals, do we, do we have any idea of what their project timelines are? I always want to ask, you know, is this thing supposed to, you know, break ground here within, you know, the next couple of months? What's their estimated completion? Just curious.
I don't have any information regarding the timeline on this. Unfortunately, I just don't have that, you know, they'll, they'll have to work with engineering as well as inspection on, on permitting, whether or not they break ground by, by this fall with everything else going on. I would tell you that the site plans are good for one year and unless they pull a permit, then the site plan approval would expire.
Thank you, yeah, it's just always nice to see, you know, obviously we approve these site plans just to see the progression of some of these projects around town.
All right, council direction? I don't think we have direction yet, do we?
Yes, you did.
I'm checking out for an approving resolution for the consent without objection with a few stipulations. I mentioned, I'm not sure if the clerk got that, about making sure that the existing wall in between residents and the building was of the same material and also if there is a dumpster. Go ahead, Councilman Jolly.
I'm actually waiting for the chair to recognize me after you speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jolly, I could not see that you were waiting.
Mr. Donovan can finish speaking, let's.
Okay. When you're, when, when Mr. Donovan, Mr. Jolly just chime in, I'm sorry, I could not see that you were waiting.
Dumpster enclosure if, is needed in the future to make sure that it is a decorative material or a material that matches the existing.
All right, Mr. Jolly.
You know, since it's, I would feel more comfortable if we put this on the regular as the petition right now and we're adding requirements. And I think, I think this issue of going into a potential dumpster enclosure that may never materialize is not something that we should necessarily get hung up on. I think it's quite often for businesses, banks are one instance, doctors' offices are another instance, that the services actually come in, clean the facilities and take the garbages with them, this is. This is extremely common in our community, and I don't think it's something we need to get hung up on. I'm okay with the approval. I'd like it on the regular, because the petitioner is not here, and Mr. Donovan is adding additional requirements. But again, as far as the requirement of the dumpster enclosure, I don't wanna get hung up on that. Thank you.
I was going to suggest also that we put it on the regular, because we do not have the petitioner with us, and Mr. Donovan had offered some additional stipulations. And to your point, Mr. Jolly, I believe that medical waste is, that the regulations are controlled at the state level, and perhaps county level, and I think that there's a built-in compliance mechanism there through the kind of services that you mentioned, right, where medical waste is picked up separately. So, I would agree with your point on that, and I would just, I think between now and the next meeting... Madam Chair. Yes, Councilmember Toy.
I guess my comments were, because I wondered what the process was, when we don't, you know, have something in place. That's, that's kinda where I was going with that, but I was glad to see that Councilman Jolly is putting them on the regular, if everyone agrees, because if the petitioner is forward, then we can always ask him or her those questions on whatever.
Absolutely, and I appreciated your comments. I think...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah, I do actually agree this should be on the regular meeting, because the petitioner isn't here. Just simply, my comments about the trash isn't to be, it is important to make sure that there are bags. Right now, yeah, there are trash services out there, and I understand that, but I wanna make sure that there are five, 10, 15 bags piled up on the side of Joy Road on a weekly basis, and I think it is important to make sure that we do look at these sorts of things. But yeah, I do agree it should be on the regular. Thank you, Councilman Jolly.
All right, so we will place that on the regular agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Terramina. I also wanted to thank Planning Commission Chair Ian Welshaw, who's been on with us this evening. It's been appreciated to have him here. And are there any other, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the council? Before I, before I adjourn, I'd like to also say hello to Judy Preby, who's joined us this evening via, I think, Zoom, and we hope, Judy, that you're feeling better and that your recovery is continuing pace. We've missed you. Certainly, I've trained Sarah well, and Sarah's done a great job, but we've missed you, and we think of you, and keep you in our prayers and thoughts, and look forward to when we can all be back together. I don't know if you've got a second or something. It's, we missed you.
And we look forward to many more years of working with her, correct, Madam President?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Thank you. I miss you guys, and look forward to seeing you hopefully by the end of the month.
Excellent. All right, take care of yourself.
I will. Thank you very much.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Good night, Livonia, and thank you Livonia TV for being here to keep us coming to the public, and for all of your hard work during this, and again, just thank you to everyone. I don't know if you're still on, Mark. All the department heads are working hard. Oh, Ian, did you wanna say something? I guess not. Anyway, all the department heads, as I mentioned in the last meeting rather awkwardly, trying to cover all the department heads, all the department heads are doing exceptional job. Mark has his pulley especially full with, with the job that has kept him busy despite the coronavirus, but also handling the logistics of the distributions at the rec center, and now, you know, co-leading the Livonia Cares Program. So, thank you, Mark, for continuing to do an outstanding job. Madam Chair. If I had to share my screen and show a lot of different pictures, we'd probably all still be waiting, so, thanks.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
You know, we talk a lot about our city department heads, and all our great workers, and everyone, but I think we need to give also, kinda goes without saying, a shout-out to our residents that are staying in place, and driving our numbers down, and, you know, adhering with their masks now, and their gloves. Next week, it'll be snowsuits, snowing, teasing, but in all seriousness, I think everybody should be commended in our community that has been cooperating and adheres to things like not throwing their gloves, you know, over in store areas, parking lots, et cetera, but thank you for your leadership, too, Madam Chair and Vice President Barr. You guys have been awesome to lead us in these uncertain times. We, I really appreciate, and I sure the rest of us do, all the hard work you do day in and day out. Thank you again.
Thank you. I'm glad you didn't ask for a vote, Councilmember Toy.
I'm consenting.
That was very diplomatic. All right, anyone else? All right, well, thank you, and good night, Livonia. Thanks to everybody. Good night, you're adjourned.